The order was five things.
Where is my?
So we're gonna stick with the agenda as advertised, so just bear with us for a minute, we're gonna go through and on the very, do the various budget approvals tonight. I have on the stop at the top of the stack though, the documents for North Hudson. We did meet and inform last, last time with North Hudson Schools. I also have the appropriation reduction resolution that we've been doing every time for their rainy day fund as well. And the amount of four hundred sixty eight thousand eight fourteen, you've seen that. As far as the rest of their budget. Thirteen million eight sixty six seventy five, adopted tax levy of three million eight twenty one seventy nine. And a tax rate of one point two zero one two. Were there any other questions or discussion that anybody wanted with North Hudson Schools? And if somebody would like to make.
I'll move, I'll move to approve.
On both?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the appropriation tax rates as well as the appropriation reduction of the resolution for the rainy day fund, is there a second? There's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any further discussion? I'll ask all those in favor, if they say aye.
Aye.
Was there any opposed? All in favor, Rachel? I'll ask the person who's on the end tonight. Tony, please make sure these come back, we have two commissioners over there, please keep an eye on Tony, make sure he gets Rachel over.
Yeah, make sure you get your secretary, your big one.
That doesn't mean something, you should make sure I get my. And then, well, since it's separate, before I go to the other stat, we did have some discussion. There'd be two separate ones on top, so we can't go last. Um, we did have some discussion last time with the airport authority, we asked them to follow the policy. Spending that's generally accepted during the state. I, was, were there any other questions or any discussion related to the airport outside of that? The adopted, of those, those budget was one million eight sixty two nine forty one, with an adopted tax levy of three hundred eighty four thousand four oh five. Adopted tax rate of zero point zero three four two. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion to accept the budget advertised for the airport authority?
I make the motion, we adopt the airport budget.
We have a motion from Howard, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second from Cassie, is there any further discussion? I'll ask all those in favor, please say aye. Is there any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, Rachel. And then, I have before me the budget for the solid waste management, strict adopted budget of two hundred ninety nine thousand nine ninety seven. I will throw a piece of discussion out there, is that I, I still hope that at some point. We get a negotiated garbage rate for Stark County, so we can see some savings. I, I think it's a great program up, you know, that we've got going, and it'd be nice someday to see it expand maybe into third side, things like that, but. I think they have a really nice operation going on out there, it's clean, seems. Are there any questions or discussion about the solid waste? Is there anybody that wants to make a motion to accept their budget?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion from Cassie, is there a second? Any further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Not opposed, Rachel.
So, those of you who are doing nay on some of those, might just still sign, but make sure you check nay. I appreciate.
So then the last, what I saved for last was the Stark County budget. We did have some carryover discussions come last meetings. About our interaction and the business that we have with the Stark County Fair Board. There was some discussion about possibly modifying our decision on how we appropriate the funds. Based on the outcome of their meeting, the decision by their board was not to have any county council involvement in their board, I believe that. At least my personal feeling that we should not defund them. But in being responsible to our constituents, obviously, we need to be. Able to tell the public what those funds are going for and. One of the recommendations or one of the discussion items we had from our last meeting was at least. Making a policy for that fund, that they would come below us and, and request the funds. Is there anybody that would like to discuss that further or make an emotion?
Well, I, I will discuss it for just a moment, but I will make that motion, you know, when, when taxpayers come to us and wanna know. Other tax money is being spent, I think we're obligated to be able to tell that, so I am in favor of leaving that fund. But, any expenditures from that fund would need approval. By the county council, that gives us oversight, and it doesn't take anything away from anybody, but we will have oversight.
So, would you like to make a motion to accept the county budget with that set, set policy?
I will, I will.
Let's, let's see if there's a second for the motion. Is there a second? I'll second that motion. Discussion.
The only, the only thing I say, I, I agree with Bruce, and speaking with. Mr. Benclay and tell you, the other Mr. Benclay. They didn't appear that the fair board had any problem with that. And, and I mean, I don't know why they would. Because they're still gonna get. Well, and we're just gonna, everybody's gonna know exactly what went forward, even though I think I already know what went.
There's been a lot of accusations about picking.
I got one question. Who did you guys say on the airport? Who did we, who did you appoint for the airport?
We asked them to come to us also with, based on the policy. We did the same thing.
I'd just like to say something too, even though I'm gonna be abstaining from any voting on the fair board. That, I do, I do feel like the issue of financial transparency has somewhat been resolved. Because I know Todd was able to obtain their tax return information from the internet, because nonprofit agencies. I believe they're required to post their tax return, so I was able to look that over, and after looking that over. I really felt like that allevi, that should alleviate a lot of the financial transparency concerns. That being said, because we are being, we are requiring all of the other bodies that we provide. Funding for, I mean, large amounts of appropriated funding, because we're requiring or asking them to have, let us have a seat. In the spirit of consistency, I think that Bruce's, that. The fact that they're opting not to, I think Bruce's suggestion is a fair compromise.
Yeah, I think, I, I don't think it hurts the program, but it does allow us to be able to tell people when they ask. What that money's being spent.
That's what I'm saying, you're, you're appointing an airport without a discussion, you're gonna have a big fight with the airport.
I voted no.
I think, I think Dave covered.
I'm just saying, drop it now. Just drop it.
I, I have. Cause I, what comes to my mind is why. You guys feel the need to add an additional layer of approval on top of what we already have in place. Because they have to go through the vendor claims process, which then comes to the board of commissioners for final assignments.
Well, I, I can only tell you, I've been involved for thirty years off and on. There's been funding going to the fair board for over thirty years. Now, just hang on, Don, you and I gotta talk anyway. Yeah, we do. So they're putting together CDs. That for rainy day, I'm, I'm sure. But yet, on the back. Of county government. So, I, I just, I honestly believe if there's, if there's cash reserve.
I'm not saying.
No, I'm not talking to you. If there's need for cash reserve, then why is there need to come back to the county, why keep, why keep coming to the pump? And taking a draw from the pump?
Well, I think this is a way. That's why it's okay for the council to ask that, we, we're, we're the fiscal body.
Saying, why pick on one?
Well, honestly, I, I don't wanna drag, I don't wanna drag them down, and all the things they're doing wrong, Don, but that board that they have is, is not, not a standard board, the way it's set.
Well, I, I was like, I don't wanna do that. Just real quick, just the way I kinda look at it. When I was at the meeting the other night. They do recognize there's some things that need to be changed, and it's not like. Come out of COVID, I will say that, I just wanna give them the, the credit that. You know, maybe they're focused with something a little bit different. But we have come out of COVID, things aren't, losing your carnival guys is not something that's. You couldn't have a carnival, a lot of carnivals went out of business, just, just, I'm just trying to be fair.
You know, I don't think we're debating that anymore. All we're saying is, all we're saying is, to be more responsible. They didn't want us to be on the board, the commissioners had that, had that, you know, it was, it was out there for you to say you wanted to be on the board, our, our group said we wanted to. You know, like I said. I just wanted to make this more simple that way, to say, hey, like, like that's the way to do it, then we could say. I had a hundred people contact me, Don, that said, I don't care if it's a. Like I said, I, I don't, I don't really wanna hash out all the things that, that they're doing wrong, cause they're doing a lot of things right too. Sometimes though, the government can make, just because we're government, we're also peers, we're just making suggestions on how to run a board.
I'm asking, why did you insist on that? But you haven't. You asked the airport to be on the.
Actually, the, the airport said they were gonna go to their board and see if we could put somebody on the floor, we have called them back.
Just like the fair board told you, and in the same meeting, the fair board said that.
Another good comparison would be how we've treated economic development for the last three years. It's a pretty similar situation in my mind.
Yeah, skill the same way.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, consistency, we, we've held other organizations. Feet to the fire with financial transparency, and then we have board participator, council participation on our board. So that when I mentioned consistency, we're just asking them for the same.
And I'm not saying you, you're not doing wrong, I'm just saying, why did you pick on one, not the other? You're talking twelve thousand dollars to a million and a half. You still are not on their board, but you approved their money.
Well, and we. We approved the twelve thousand for the fair board as well, and my recollection at the last meeting was the airport folks. They go to.
Yeah, they're, they're trying to.
Their board, they haven't come back yet, and they said they're, they voted no, when we did receive that information from the, from the fair board. But I, I still think, you know, I did mention this, I think to, to Mr. Peirman. And maybe I said to Charlie, just to, that I think, you know, if the council is really interested in. In helping with improvements in the fair board, if there's any level of cooperation or any spirit of cooperation that can be salvaged. I don't think at least putting together preliminary committee. Made of council members, board members, and then some. Folks who aren't members of either to get together and start brainstorming on potential improvements. Then the council would still have some input and some suggestion making, so with the fair board. But it wouldn't be seen as, it's not the same kind of power struggle that we're looking at now, and that's my regret, that I feel that this has turned into. To a power struggle between the council and the board.
Thank you.
Now, I'm not letting anybody off the hook as far as who's doing what, but it is now a power struggle, and that's detrimental to everybody in the county. And I think that maybe at least looking at doing some sort of committee. Might at least start building the bridge. Without us having a board seat for right now, and I still think that Bruce's suggestion is a reasonable compromise. Going to get their funding, but then we will have accountability to, and I, to our taxpayers, which. You know, I, I've read a lot about the council actively bullying the fair board. But what it comes down, and I've read a lot too about folks complaining that government getting more involved in anything is never a good thing. But what it comes down to is. We feel responsible to our taxpaying voters, and that's what we are pursuing with all of this. It's, I, I don't think that we, from anybody here, and you know, I'm new to this council, so. But from what I've observed since January, I don't think anybody here wants the extra work of sitting on another board, you know, that's not a, a fun idea, we're not looking to. To bully anybody or throw weight around. But, and we do wanna help. But, there still needs to be that accountability, and I feel like that's been a consistent theme since, at least since January, probably way back into the past. But I've seen it time and time again, since I started here in January, so.
That's why we approved the airport.
But we do have an itemized budget.
Well, we're not, we're not, we're not supporting that, we're not taking their funds away. I mean, the, the airport is gonna, is going to approach us with their spending. But I, I wanna talk now then, since you brought it up.
Right.
Uh, because there's been a lot of personal attacks on me, and I will tell you, Don. I talked to a couple, a few people on that fair board before this all started, I said, hey. I'm gonna try to like, put an effort personally to try to spend a lot more money out there. Don, you stood there with me at that entry, you heard all those people complaining about the fair, you heard them, you were there with me.
Jim Brexel, Mike Bohat. You, myself, Tony maybe?
Yeah, they all, everybody heard it, Tony heard it too, people were upset about the fair, but.
And then what you gonna point to the board, Dave, if you want, let's just drop, go after it.
Todd, or, or I volunteered myself, but Todd really would have been probably better, because, you know, but.
And I'll, I'll say to him, on the subject, if, if the airport board comes back to us and says that their. Board has voted not to amend the bylaws to allow us to have a board.
What I'm saying.
I think they have not yet, but if they do come forward and say that, then I would be expecting us to make the same sort of proposal that they come to us, and they need the funds.
When the fair board asks the same thing. To your board, you guys attack. You didn't say, go on, go on, they said, come to our meeting, you guys said, no, no.
And all honesty, Don, they were pretty rude to us. I, I have had a lot of people that watched it, and there's people sitting here, and I'm not gonna, that it said the same thing, but I will tell you, back to the same thing. I didn't know Bobby and Ian were the ones I needed to go to, I went to two others.
But then you didn't drop it, just kept.
And I said, you know, this, wanna do it, but I didn't realize that they thought that we would put a lot of money into it without any oversight, we can't, we can't do that.
They would never tell them about no bigger money or whatever.
That's not true, like, I'm not gonna throw the people. During, I said that I wanted some of the solar money. That I thought that would bring us all together.
We said we wanted to give more money.
Yeah.
After you got the big fight.
That's what I opened with, anyways.
Do I have a second?
Yes, my motion, we have a motion.
One thing, Todd, myself, and, and Tony. Attended the meeting the other night. And I'm not gonna rehash what went on in the meeting, but there was something positive that did come out, out in the meeting. Is, there is, there is committees out there now that, that the public can get on, can be on. For example, if, if I hear a comment of this, and what's going on, or this or that, or why can't this happen, this happen, I said. I'm, I'm gonna respond that. The fair board has three different committees. That they don't object to you being on, go sign up for the committee. So, I think the committee, the committees that they appointed the other night. Are a positive thing. That's what I have to say. They can, they can get the community more involved. Right?
I just, I just wanna make a clear, and I made it clear at that meeting. I was speaking to Deb here, but Phil speak. The last intention in my mind is to take that money away from that fair board.
I know what you're thought.
I mean, that, that is, that is one hundred percent the farthest end of my mind. And I think that everybody else doesn't wanna take anything away from anybody.
But can you honestly say if handled correctly?
I don't, I don't know, Don, I'm really tore up about the way the whole thing.
Thank you.
I mean. It, it got, it got a lot more. I don't know, I don't even know what we're doing. Obstinate, almost to the point of violence.
And that's what I'm saying, it's, all I was asking the council to do is be fair.
And, and I know.
What's not fair? And you still prove.
And, and during, and during, and during the meeting. That was brought up, and our brought up, brought about making the pool and the fund, and I asked Bobby, has that meeting? I don't, would you have objections? Did you have objections that coming to us, what you wanna use that money for, and everybody in the board said cancel it, that's fine, that's no problem.
And then, there again, that's what I'm saying.
So.
Be fair.
So we're doing this like this, I think we're going in the right direction.
That's fine, yeah, I think so, you, they take the money.
Yeah.
But why do you appropriate the airport?
I didn't appropriate, I voted no.
Well, I'm not saying you, but I'm saying, ain't none of you on the board, because you insisted on.
They haven't, they haven't paid back yet, they told us, yeah, they told us to come back to the meeting.
So did the fair eight board.
Yeah.
And they took a fit or whatever, and they started fighting about it the whole night. Why didn't he tell like the airport, okay, go back to your meeting, we'll come to you, we'll come back to you, or you come back to, the board, the air board asset.
And, and we, and we, they asked us to come to me, and we.
And you said, absolutely, don't come, or you don't do what we say, your money's gone.
That's not gonna happen, true, we never said that. Never said we were taking their money.
You didn't.
I know you're saying I did, Don, cause I've heard you say that, I've heard your family say that, I've heard a people, I've never said that.
I was setting my ear.
They're fixed, did I, did I ever say that here, you're trying to take their money?
I recall here specifically hearing, we discussed at the first meeting on this, it was well attended. That we wanted to provide more funding.
More.
Or improvements of the fairgrounds, I remember you mentioning the property lines. A lot, there were different specific things you mentioned that we would like to assist with funding in addition to what we're already.
Exactly, what was said, Don, was they didn't need our money, because it was only twelve thousand five hundred, what I said was. And they said the only thing that was important was that livestock auction, that's exactly what they said, and then. Yes, I did look at that tax return, so if the livestock auction, say, brings in two hundred thousand. And say it's three percent commission, which it is, that's six thousand dollars. How does the county's twelve thousand five hundred, why is that so insignificant? That's another point I was trying to make.
And you said, if you don't let us on the board, we will be.
I did not say that.
What's that mean? Well, actually, that's.
One of seven anyways, yeah, but anyways, a motion in the second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
One abstention, just for the recording, Rachel. Um, we're gonna hold off on the employee appreciation event, because Rachel had to leave, EMS does not need the seller request that they previously discussed, so next up is Dan.
Good evening. Rachel has to transfer to the first.
The one about the bridge can solve that. So I guess the only discussion, it sounds like everybody that's talking in the van is like, like, obviously it's come up now that we didn't like expect it coming up sooner.
Okay. This probably came out. Six to seven months. Yes. When we voted, we put the. Construction inspection out.
Are there more bridges that are gonna be affected, in the same way, we're gonna be short on.
When's it gonna let next year?
Next year, yes, so if we were gonna hire a county engineer. That would, that would go to next year then, like, I'm just saying, I'm just throwing that out there, there was a possibility of. Hiring somebody to do the engineer jobs, this is the last one for this year, never gonna fall short, yes.
Are we gonna fall short, shorten bridge one?
One thirty seven.
We are gonna fall short for that bridge too.
Yes.
Do you know by how much?
You're gonna be the one twenty two. Close to the same.
So, how, how did, how did, how did this happen, I mean, in the past, when we, we. And going back a ways, but though that, that consultancy would have always been added to the project, right? You were my superintendent.
Well, I did all of it myself when I was there. I assumed there hadn't been RFQs for the inspection. It should have been on, was it, was this an LPA job?
It started out as a local project and got switched over to.
Okay, so, so, so it's still an LPA, and that still has oversight over it because of their own money, so. In my experience with that. There should have been, it should have been posted for inspection on the N dot website under LPA projects, I don't know if it was or not. And then if it was, or if it wasn't. How was it awarded without there being an RFQ for that much money? I mean, I don't know, did you guys, you, you remember? Because we're talking like a hundred and some, hundred and twenty thousand. Hundred twenty two thousand, I mean, I know.
They need extra for them?
Yeah, for the inspection.
Yeah.
I mean, this, this is what I do for a living, okay? And when we've been on a project. They'll ask for an RFQ, we'll send it out, and we'll say, okay. We're gonna do this project, this scope, for, say, a hundred twenty thousand dollars, every month. There's an invoice that comes in, and if the feds have oversight over, even though they're not paying for it. They'll look at that, and they'll question it. As an oversight for the construction money. And then, that's how we get paid. I mean, there ain't no miller willy sending in a bill for a hundred twenty thousand dollars, expecting to get paid. I mean, I don't, I don't know how this all, all came about without it not being brought up to anybody. I mean, I don't, I don't know how this all, all came about without it not being brought up to anybody. I mean, I I don't know.
What were you saying though, Todd? Is there any alternative to paying the money?
Well, I don't know what the alternative is. I don't think there's any alternative. I mean, I don't think we have it in choice.
My understanding of the root of the problem was the fact that this is that, this before Dan came in. You know, once upon a time, we had. An inspector on the chief. Who retired.
Yeah.
And you can't get a new inspector on the chief.
I I understand that.
This is the route we have to.
I understand that clearly, but this route should have been brought up a long time ago, not after the fact.
It was brought up because everybody knows about it.
Not everybody. I don't know anything about it. I never heard anything about it ever.
I believe he did bring it up to the commissioners, but I don't think we ever brought it up to the council. So I think what Todd's saying, we should have let the council know before we even start paying United.
We have discussed this cuz we've talked about hiring engineers to work. Uh cuz there is a stipend for.
Yes, the state of Indiana pays each county forty thousand dollars if you have a engineer on your payroll, so. So what I suggested is taking that construction inspection position and. Molding it into an engineer position. It would not cost the taxpayers any additional money in Stark County for us to have an engineer. As a county.
And the problem is, it has to be a licensed professional. It's not somebody E I T.
But between construction inspector and what what we already budgeted and forty thousand, that's like ninety thousand. Not for ninety.
We have, we have had this discussed.
So we're gonna have this come up again next year, Dan, on another bridge, you're saying?
Yes.
On thirty seven.
So how about, can it, that be paid for through the accumulation of the bridge fund?
You can pay for our huge bridge receipt.
Is that, how how did we, how do we get to that? Do we bid that though to make sure we're getting? So United was the lowest?
And that goes through that.
Well, usually the RF user, they're listed on the N dot website under LPA projects. And then, but that personally, usually they'll respond back to the county. And there's an eight page worksheet where you grade everybody. If they stop at that grade, that's who they're supposed to pay. Not necessarily always. So we're doing.
Between, between the project approval and the contract with United, the overall contract.
How much is in the Kew Bridge Fund?
So he has a cash balance right now of almost four hundred thousand dollars, around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So he has the cash balance to cover this. It's just. An additional from reaction to what you've already appropriated him for twenty twenty.
But we don't want to take, I I understand why we want to take out the construction inspector because that's gonna be gone. And that makes, that makes perfect sense. I mean.
I just tried to, when I was doing the transfers, I tried to pull. Money from everything else that already has money in it right now that we're not gonna use. And to put it into the other line for the construction inspection.
We can still try to hire somebody next year. I mean, I know Todd's saying that's not possible, but we never know. What if somebody retired? Somebody that can moonlight or.
You see.
Never say never.
Farther than next year, having this being a continuing, continuing process.
Well, their, their current projects right now, they need to, I mean. Bridge seven, bridge one thirty seven, they were already, they already went through the whole paperwork process before. You know, Bob left and then Bob left and that's. So right now, when they're doing their bidding or they're going through the paperwork process on their future bridges. They should, should, that money should be put in, you know, figured into the total amount.
Yeah. So then, they'll, they'll pay eighty percent of it.
Yes.
That's the whole problem is just that it wasn't.
It wasn't put into.
I'm not, I'm not saying it must probably be bullies about oversight. I'm saying for, you know, everybody. You know, I mean, here's a shock all of a sudden that we got this bill for a hundred twenty thousand dollars. And nobody seems to know anything about it.
So that, that total amount wasn't put into the total bill of what that bridge is gonna cost, so we're not getting eighty percent back on that.
But I don't think the paper, they will favor it anyway. I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what to make a motion on. Be honest with you.
If you wanted to start with the transcript that I submitted, start there. Um really, he needs an extra. What's one twenty two minus that total that's on the paper? I mean, really, he's gonna need that. If you wanted to do additional for that.
Almost fifty one. See, and then. The reason, the reason you're taking it out of the health insurance.
Is because the health insurance and the Kew Bridge Fund only pays for the health insurance of a. Construction inspector that we don't have. So that's why I was moving money from that.
Take care of this for right now and.
We don't have any choice. See, I make a motion to do it.
I'll make the motion that we um approve the appropriation. For the highway um. Into bridge consultant of sixty nine thousand seven twenty nine. From construction inspector, construction inspection administration and health insurance. Is there a second? Second from Howard. Is there any further discussion?
I I would like to make the comment that. I think ninety thousand dollar salary is a pretty nice, is a pretty nice salary. Maybe not in the perspective of a bridge inspector or an engineer. But it is well worth our while next year, so we don't come into this, we don't keep butting heads with this in the next few years. That we do try to hire possibly a part time or s- or a retiree or somebody that can, that. That will take this job. And keep us in the future from spending more money. I think it's, I I think it's maybe not, maybe not a full time position, but. It is worth looking into to see if we can find somebody that can, that is qualified and will do this for this amount of money to save us future money. Does that make sense?
Yeah, cuz that's why it was created.
Let's do that. It does, but you're not gonna get the money from the state for a part time engineer.
Not bad hard time.
I know, I I know consultants do this and. People that they have part times for a consultant, they pay them probably fifty dollars an hour. Not not being an engineer. Just being somebody that has experience.
Why don't we check into it, Rick? Share with another county.
Yeah, yeah, we can see if there's, I mean, most counties probably like already have their engineer set up. So we'd have to find a county that doesn't have one and kind of partner with them because then the state will give twenty thousand dollars to them. They'll give twenty thousand dollars to us. Oh, I hope Dan helped me.
Okay, there you go.
And I mean, it's worthwhile to try to get another construction inspector too.
I agree. I believe we have a lot in common with last guy. Actually, we, we really be needing a partner with a lot of things. I don't, do they have a, do they have an engineer there?
You know, it might be worth your time though, cuz there are a couple big capital improvement projects.
Because, because, I mean, it's just natural because we're.
Because the county engineer could do a lot more things than just the bridges or the roads. I mean, it's like. So broad. I mean, you could say that's a whole lot of money and a lot of other consultants that the county wouldn't have to pay. Yeah, so I mean, it's definitely.
Motion, second? All those in favor, I? Is there any opposed? Uh favorite, Rachel? Um I believe we had some discussions. Last time uh with the foundation about the Save the Hospital funds.
Yep, hello. Thanks for welcoming us back. Um joined with uh our. Associate Director, Craig Docno-Luvinson, and our Executive Director, Jay Albright. And since the last time they spoke with me, we went before the hospital board. Received a unanimous support from them. So there's a few representatives in the audience, Larry Jornis and Dr. Walt Gritz. Um so these packets are different than what I gave you last time. You um asked some questions about some recommendations of. Do what a fund like this could be utilized for. So um that's what these folders are. Uh and we went before the commissioners this morning and had the same discussion with them. Uh the documents that are here in these packets are. Snapshot of Stark County health statistics based on the county health ranking and roadmap. That's something that they do for counties. All across the country. Um and then just some specific examples as to how the money could be utilized and. Um these are just recommendations based on some different um factors, including uh some things from. This infographic that I included in your packet, which came out of some community input sessions that were held about public health. Um you know, I think, you know, as representatives of the county, you guys were just talking about how important it is to be. Uh you know, taking your constituents' considerations into mind. So this is just to emphasize some of the things that. Um people in the community have already expressed an interest in prioritizing. Um and that was done through connections and help. Uh we also provided you guys ahead of time with a Excel sheet that had just a. Bunch of examples of different grants that we've done in in various sectors, including like youth health, crisis management, food security. Medical education, human services. Um because while. Community health isn't the main thing we do. It is something that we've um put dollars towards. Uh through the various funds that we have. And so that's another piece of information that I provided. And then I just wanted to make sure you guys also still had the kind of proposal as to what kind of fund it would be and what the committee breakdown. Uh would be because ultimately this would be multifaceted and have uh experts from various fields who would weigh in. Uh and so like what should be addressed with with funds like this. So I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that may be popped up in between the last time we spoke and now um.
I think for me personally, I'm interested in this being at the top of our list. I mean, I. Think we need to look at more at the information that you just provided here. Um you know, and and thinking about the original establishment of of that fund. You know, just, it's, you know, but I think the thing that scares me a little bit from the council seat is obviously those funds, you know, cannot be. Reel back if if we let them go. Um and I, you know, I think we need a little bit more education to be able to make that decision that. Community Foundation is the best um uh entity to make the decision about the health. Of Stark County moving forward. I mean, there are of of other. Other entities or, you know, other things that could be spent on. So I think um. You know, I just, I I personally, I just don't wanna be hasty, but I'm, and I mean, and I've been involved in a lot of the projects that you guys have done, funded, you know what I'm saying? Um like I said, and a lot of it has been around merch and services and fire and things like that. I think it's great. This is for healthcare though, so I mean, that would be. You know, I I think if there was some way, if we did do it, personally, I'd be interested in. Be able to make sure that they want for healthcare, but right now this money is earning money for the taxpayers. It's invested. I I, yeah, right. But I'm, what I'm saying is it's not just sitting in the fowl though. Um. So um it's, it's making money for itself. How's that?
I mean, I'd like to know the commissioners. I was gonna say, we uh this morning thought here about. Part, you know, just part of the, doing the whole. Amount in that way. The other money's still collecting money.
And I think that, oh, sorry, I didn't. I was just gonna say, I believe that they had a similar sentiment as far as exploring your options and making sure you guys are considering. You know, other ways that these funds could potentially be put towards a good use, but uh the fact that we're, you know, being considered is something that we appreciate and. Um you know, I try not to overwhelm you with information, but the Community Foundation does do a lot. So that's why we provided specific examples of what. We've done with donor dollars and how we've been responsible stewards with that money and then also just some um ideas that came out of. Uh just understanding, working with nonprofits that are investing in community health and sort of initiatives that they seem to be prioritizing. Um and Commissioner Worley also brought up the fact that, you know, there is some state and federal funding that is coming down pipe for um. Health, health needs and um it's just something that seems like it's on the forefront of the minds of, of many people, so.
So when, when I served on the hospital board, one of the things that I think the hospital has problems is getting people to come. To Stark County. So when, when I originally talked with you guys, my thought was how could our funds? Be realistic. We we'll never buy back the hospital with those funds. But how do we help individuals with their health educations to come back and serve Stark County? That was, that was one of the concerns I have. Uh how how do we do that? How do we co-op with the hospital? And how do we, how do we have funds to help train nurses or potential doctors or so on and so forth? Does that make sense, Doc? You?
Yes, it's a legitimate consideration, certainly.
Yeah, well, one of my roles at Community Foundation is I'm a program officer. And so I manage committees in all three of the counties. Um and then we have a variety of funds. And one of the things that we do is make sure that we have an intention for that fund and that we follow what those are. Um and so just as you said, Mr. Pyramid about um making sure it's health related. That would be something that we would discuss ahead of time. So we have kind of a roadmap to go on. With this fund. So we make sure that we're addressing those things that we've all agreed are needs within the community. So we don't sway off.
Twelve years ago, people brought up things like a YMCA type situation, a lot of different kinds of things. And we have a lot of very specific types of. Illness care in Stark County. So I mean, again, you know, like I said, to me, the foundation is on the top of the list, but. At the end of the day too, I think we, you know, always scratch the surface and, you know, even understanding what this would go for. I mean. You know, I I it. You know, so foundation is pretty well funded. It's a different.
I think, where where does this ordinance fit into the whole thing? Unanimous vote with commissioners and five of us.
For the last meeting, I, I asked Rachel to pull it.
Yeah.
Because I guess it's the lawyer in me. I wanna say the governing law on all this. And so section five specifically says upon a request by the Community Board of Directors at Stark Memorial Hospital. Uh the county council of on the affirmative vote of no fewer than five of its members, so what a single majority. May appropriate and the Board of Commissioners of on unanimous affirmative vote, so all three of them have to approve it. May expend funds from the trust for, and then it lists four purposes. Now, at this point in time, I'm not sure if any of those four purposes. Um are relevant to the situation at hand. But then section six goes on to say upon the, so let's say that in section five, these four conditions are completely satisfied. So if so, section six kicks in. And then we look at whether the lease has expired. And I think one of my questions in an email to. Uh Commissioner Chesick, um Councilman of President Pierman and Justin, I might have included you in that, maybe. I don't recall. Um was whether the lease has expired because the new councilperson I just didn't know that. Um and then it says, or if Stark Memorial Hospital has been sold to a medical provider. If medical care commensurate with that now provided by Stark Memorial Hospital is provided within Stark County. Which I, I guess you could argue both sides at that point, whether it is or not. And see if funds remain in the trust. Then there could all be, there would need to be public hearings conducted by the Board of Commissioners and the council. And after consultation by each of such bodies with the hospital board, the remaining trust fund may be appropriated. And to and expended for such use as determined by a joint ordinance and appropriation adopted by unanimous voted commissioners. And no fewer than five members of the Star Council. Now, if section six kicks in, we can use that money for anything we want. There's no requirement that I saw in here. You can construe a saying, it has to be used for anything health related. So we have five million dollars sitting there and we're looking at all the needs of this town and across the board, not just health. I think that here's a, there are a lot of things that this money could be used for other than, with all due respect, funding nursing scholarships. With that problem with EMS.
I mean. Cause you're, you're looking at the proceeds from those proceeds. That's several years that we got nothing. Would you have a problem uh having representation from either one of these two boards?
That was what my hand was up for. I say, you would all be, we'd have a representative from this board. We'd have a commissioner on there. We'd have probably. There's a page on there that shows all the people we would have a clue to get on that.
Dave, I share your, your residency as far as um, you know, who, who. Has, you know, who actually owns the, the funds. So right now I'm counting more towards the, the option that I brought to you guys the last evening, the trust in Indiana. It's just because it's a public asset. I just hesitate on, on the wisdom. I just hesitate on on the wisdom of losing dominion over that.
I I don't, I I agree, um, that amount of money for even a small amount, but that that is taxpayer dollars. And we are in the stewards of those taxpayer dollars to use it to create an endowment over which we would see all
And 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 I know the foundation is as good a steward of the funds they can, they manage as as we are. A little better.
I I now I want to make it clear, I I love you guys. Wonderful, necessary work. Just, it makes me very uncomfortable with that. Large amount of taxpayer money to be handing over.
You do have the benefit of us, we're local, and we're local people.
I think for me, if it was, if it had this kind of urgency, if you said, hey, we have this two million dollar project that's perky right now. And we want to fund this, but we want you to fund it because we we feel like it's suitable for these funds. That would be more palatable. I just don't, I just don't know if I see what the rush is right now.
I guess the reason that it feels sort of pertinent is the fact that um, this has been discussed multiple times with different county officials at different points in time. And so it's more like even though there's not like a rush to do it, the fact that it hasn't been put towards efforts up to this point, you know, like you said, you guys have a lot of things you can do with it, but um,
I I think a lot of us are just waiting to see what happens to the hospital. I mean, nothing's really changed yet. Maybe we have a lease, you know, that is expired, obviously, and the current administration has been a lot better to us about the um, the capital improvements and things. I remember earlier in my career, I mean, there were all kinds of things going on that we had, you know, say, hey, but this new, this new group, they've really been great about being transparent, about not charging us for things that, you know, improvements and things, but um, you know, at the end of the day, I I think I would have more comfort right now if it had a new, you know, a new phase and some of the things were done. Just because I believe that the original idea of these funds was that it was like a an insurance policy, just in case, as as elected officials, we have to provide healthcare for the county. And that was an insurance policy. And I just don't, I I don't feel like it's gotten to the point where we don't need that insurance and all that, trust the current folks, but this feel like something that happened, you know, and we might be doing this.
But this also opens up communication lines. There might be other opportunities uh, other than our save the hospital fund, Dave.
Yeah.
So I mean, it it, I think we have a lot going.
I don't know. I know Larry's on the hospital, right?
Yes.
And I I don't know if anybody else, if the docs on the hospital board. Wh-what's your input? Are, do you have an opinion right now as to what?
Tony down there.
Dave, some people call me Tony.
We received the package at our past meeting and we did vote unanimously to support. That's why we're here tonight. But after that meeting, I did find out there there are other sources that we can invest. So I guess.
And you and I were both involved when we did the the original lease.
Right. And I did not sign it.
That was a couple days ago.
And right now these funds are earning a five percent return, right?
Didn't you try, I'm sorry.
Please, regarding your question, Larry here referring uh, informal opinion from someone connected with the hospital. Uh, I'm speaking from my own personal observation as a member of the hospital board. Uh, and I I've heard a number of thoughts going through the air in these last twenty minutes, which I might be able to clarify a little bit further for you. Uh, the original name Save the Hospital Fund was primarily designed, Dave, like you you said, to assure that we have a hospital here if a new entity coming into town uh, would go bankrupt. Uh, uh, the original lease was uh, signed between uh, Port Hospital and its then new current owner, New Health Systems out of Tennessee. Uh, it's an operating lease. Stark County still owns the building and the land. Uh, they have the authority to operate a hospital utilizing those. And I believe uh, there are three more years left on the current lease. There's one option to renew for an additional ten. Um, that needs to be verified in writing. That's my latest thought. Um, looking at these last twenty years, uh, report has shown that staying power uh, and willingness to recognize us in Stark County, uh, for what we represent to the patients and the citizens in this county. Uh, there, this is a mutually beneficial relationship. Um, where Hod might have expressed uh, some concern of the hospital being able to stand on its own at this point. Not not by ourselves, but if something were to happen between us and report per se. Um, we have enough uh, resource in Stark County to interest uh, other individuals to come in and take over on on short notice if need be currently. Uh, uh, oh, a lot of the specialized medical care that we've provided twenty years ago uh, has through hospital industry developed around the nation, gravitated towards the larger institutions. And here's where uh, Laporte is benefiting from a a number of patient transfers of those still enough or needing specialists that we're not able to furnish twenty-four, seven here in Stark County anymore. We transfer to them as opposed to Hobart and South Bend of the way it used to be twenty plus years ago. And that interest uh, will be a big enough motivating factor if for some reason our association report were to collapse all of a sudden to attract ongoing uh, support for the maintenance of a hospital in Stark County now. Uh, I I'm not too concerned about that. Uh, the the two points that I'm interested in are that during these twenty years of uh, this uh, fund um, for various legal reasons, Stark County has not been able to invest it at the highest rate of return instruments. Uh, that by involving uh, an organization like the Northern Indiana Foundation. Uh, they're able to invest wisely and at a much higher rate of return. And it's that preservation of the the basic principle and utilizing an increased rate of return that can be turned around and benefit people in this county now instead of just sitting in a a bank account, uh, accumulating a small amount of interest. That's the reason subjects come up right now. Uh, Community Foundation has got its act together enough, uh, has streamlined itself. Uh, has uh, developed a system that looks to be foolproof. Um, it certainly involves enough people that it's not entirely dependent on one or two or three. The community or the committee concept of dispersing the the impressed proceeds on an ongoing basis. Uh, to me, these ought to satisfy the need of this county of that community, of that committee were were composed and comprised properly and I trust it to be. Uh, I I look for this as a a new phase in use of this money to benefit people in this county who need some help. Uh, uh, that we have not been able to do so with it sitting fallow and gaining tenth percent interest uh, until now. Uh, that's the way I personally see this. And uh, knowing some of the safety that I see is inherent in this uh, process. Uh, losing control of money. Uh, you lose it to control too. The future is unknown. The sky can fall on any of us at any time. Uh, I personally see the positives outweighing negatives uh, just developing these last couple of years. Uh, one other point of clarification, the current community health systems is assuring us that they do not intend to try to even utilize one penny of this, say, the hospital fund for any uh, construction or reconstruction that might go on with the physical plant. Uh, which is uh, on the front burner right now for consideration.
Thank you.
And just to kind of build on that, uh, the fact that um, I totally respect and understand that you have a lot of considerations to take and lots of options to weigh, but um, I feel like looking at this more as a partnership than a like handover or like a hostage takeover of this money is something that I think would be like really beneficial in looking forward. Um, as far as you continue to consider it, but yeah, we're happy to come back answering the additional questions. Um, you know, this is just something that uh, uh, when I came into the foundation was kind of told to me that this was something that had been discussed multiple times in in many iterations of different directors and um, I just see the potential for there to be like a really robust uh, I guess initiative that's supported with these funds that would kind of put Stark County in a position like what you were uh, alluding to that would encourage people to want to be a part of the healthcare system in this community if we're prioritizing these needs that have been, you know, presented by community members and different people in the field. Um, so yeah, I'll just add that. Um, okay, I would take it up a lot of your time, so.
You did very well.
Well, thank you.
Is there any reason why we couldn't have an exploratory committee with with the hospital board and some other?
And I think that'd be the best way to proceed. And I think for now, the idea would be to make
And if you would serve on it too, Dave, that, you know, you have a lot of ideas as far as different health situations in the county. I I'd I'd like to see us move forward if we can. If we can't, we can't, but um, we've got a lot to look forward to and we've got other monies coming right from the help.
I just hate to see it just end like this, because we can go forward.
The sessions would be very helpful, even for plans that we currently have, you know, if we all can kind of talk about what are the best places to to move forward in healthcare for Stark County. It just can be positive.
And there's a lot of discussions already happening, like, um, you know, uh, Councilwoman Heinz was at the community input session for uh, Porter Stark and there, like I said, connections in health already did one with Stark County. There's the statistics that are provided through the health rankings and roadmap. So it's like we have uh, pieces, it's like a matter of putting it into a plan and being able to do something that's, you know, you know, gonna move it forward and kind of in just the right direction. Um, again, so. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to table it.
Second from Tony, all those in favor? I, yep. Is there any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Director Dan, some people say Lieutenant Dan.
Since when did you decide doing that money, Dave?
That I, um, I'm not your name, wearing my Notre Dame scarf.
You know, I'm from Purdue or whoever else.
He's here with Roy and we are here to keep talking about Roy's project. Roy has been on for a few years. Go ahead.
Um, yes, uh, I set off a few different boards of different things. Uh, I'm originally from Knox. My mentor is Jim Beam Noe and uh, I make whiskey. Um, I was a scientist. I'm learning it. Um, what we are interested in doing is setting up a small research and product development distillery at this moment, getting everything rezoned and that set up. Uh, that way we can get all of our licensing. Uh, that's the first phase of our plan. The second phase is next year, a five point one million dollar investment into it to expand it out. And then over the next few years, a hundred and fifty one million dollars invested into it. So that we can build something a little more sustainable. We are a zero waste um, distilling company. We are currently manufacturing most of our brands of stuff out of Orlando, Florida at the moment. We've closed down our other operations there. Um, but we want to get everything back here.
One of the points that Roy has made, so I I didn't know there was a Northern Bourbon Trail. So there, uh, and it's uh, Chicago to Toledo.
Yes.
Operational time, let's wait and stop, right? South Bend too.
No, South Bend really isn't. Pretty much, yeah.
So do we have the commodities to go in?
Actually, you have the perfect setup for us. Uh, right now, uh, in Barstown, Kentucky, the virtual capital world where we've been doing a lot of stuff. There's so many distilleries that our spent grains and things like that can't actually be used for what they used to be because now it's a weight that you gotta transport everything else. By doing it here, we have our farmers right next to us. So we get the grains. As soon as we get done matching the grains, we take the spent grams. And now it is cattle feed. So then go straight to the cattle. Uh, when we do the distillation, uh, we have two byproducts besides ethanol, and that's methanol. And we also have acetone. Both of those are soluble products. So we have
And the distiller's grain, when you're done with it, where's that be? Yes, but where will that go to?
Uh, local farmers. Local farmers, yeah.
You have a projection.
Expand our herds.
We better get a lot more cattle.
A projection of how many people you would eventually employ.
Uh, we would eventually uh, employ and ourselves and with supporting businesses around us between a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred or two hundred and fifty people.
Yeah, I'm very excited. I, Roy and I talked probably three or four, I don't know, probably three years ago. Yeah, we drove around Stark County and um, we actually went out to the non-industrial park. The only problem there was we had all the trees removed. So um, you know, they, he would use white oak, he would use
What was removed?
All the trees out in the industrial park for so that we do a
About the oats building in North Johnson.
The what?
The oats building.
Otis and Man's Building. Well, I, one of the perk with Roy and their location currently is that he already owns property near Grover Town. And it's in the rural opportunity zone, which will allow for his investors to really
Use their capital gains taxes instead of paying the government. They can give it to us, invest it with us. And as long as it stays with us for ten years, after that, any profit that they would make off that investment is tax free. So it's very good for them.
It's, yeah. And so I I brought Roy along and we met with the commissioners earlier. And he met with Dave and um, our surveyor and our health department recently and um, he will need to go through the zoning process because like he said this morning, not really sure where that fits into any of our zoning ordinances.
So uh, the state of Indiana actually leaves the zoning up to the counties in this situation. And no matter where we search, we can't find anything about what zoning for a distillery would be in Stark County.
Do you see, and this is probably premature, but do you see on a contingency that you get up and you're running, that you'd be asking for any tax abatements?
I'll take any help.
Well, I I I'm not suggesting we'll give you one, but I'm just, I'm just asking.
Well.
Well, as a business, but we're gonna look in all options.
Right, but you know, you're you're talking about hiring a hundred people. A hundred, creating a hundred jobs.
Yes.
And would your priority be to hire Stark County people?
Oh, absolutely.
And we would also, um, because I work with the state and the state will provide some incentives as well. Uh, I I would love to have like this dashboard of state will provide this or could not necessarily this is what we would provide, but can you, you know, give me a dashboard that says these are the types of incentives that our county could consider.
And your intentions would be to buy local grain.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, logistics would But but the distiller's grain, I mean, realistically, you're gonna be looking at at a neutrino over at Mentone or or a Ralston Perina, um, wherever they're at over that way. But because you're not gonna move that kind of distiller's grain to fat cattle in Stark County. I I'm sorry.
Well, no. Would actually end up becoming, if you can't give it to local farmers, then it will become compost.
Well, but you you won't have any problems moving to still, that's not what I'm saying. But for for us to set realistically, think that we're Well, but you you won't have any problems moving to still, that's not what I'm saying, but for for us to set realistically think that we're gonna have cattle feed out. Uh installations to handle all that, that's not gonna. But logistically, Stark County farmers can get you corn.
Yeah, we use local grains and it's relaxed, so. So currently, when I purchase my grains and have my grains shipped, I'm paying about sixty dollars. From fifty pound bag. Yeah, bloody butchers and I know that farmers around here are only getting like eight, twelve dollars per butcher.
So here, well, there was a four dot, four dollars and seventy cents in the hamlet today, but are you located on the on the rail out there?
Uh I'm close to it.
So you have access to the rail for for moving and receiving, but.
South of thirty uh and twenty-three, he's right off of twenty-three.
Yeah, you're on ten twenty-five.
There could be opportunities since we're in the real tree. But yeah, so basically introduction, once you guys speak, Roy, um these are his plans. And um his next step will be uh zoning of the property and uh once that's done, then he.
It's nice to see different natural things. We almost, we almost had a successful trip farm. I was excited about that.
Yeah, and I'm on about that, you know, we're an ag community and I'm part of this six county ag initiative. So these are the kinds of things to me that are sustainable and.
That's Mr. Running Back. If she gonna be part of the egg, she's gotta get rid of Notre Dame and find.
I don't have any zoning ordinances addressing distilleries, would that be the first step to get some in place?
Well, and Howard's our seat on the planning commission, so maybe he can.
Well, to 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 bring up water.
Eventually. Uh no, no discharge because we will actually distill the water itself and then reprocess it.
Justin, what do you think about um because you know Valgriso has forty million dollars journeyman's distillery just getting ready to open? You think they would have some good sample ordinances?
Um it it's one we just this morning talked about it, first off, commissioners all unanimously wanted to work towards. Process of making the current uh current comprehensive plan to allow it to be either permitting except or especially using that. Yeah, we just, we just talked about that.
Yeah, South Bend, Indianapolis, they both got.
Now, all of our grain goes up to Hammond and they distill for the for the waxy corn and stuff like.
I think perhaps the most effective way to get that done is to present it to the commissioners first, have them decide what they want, send the planning commission. Can we see things originally, planning commission, it can bounce back and forth several times, so the idea, then just again to share with you, we kind of talked through this. This morning is do the research like we suggested, send the commissioners say, what form do we want this to look like? The uh Mr. Anderson had said that he has legal counsel that he works with, like uh Chicago, you said, yeah, you don't know if they're in Chicago. Of a fair amount of renown that uh you know, works in these kinds of things at the ground level pretty frequently, so I think I'm going to. You know, kind of use his legal counsel's maybe suggestion, probably drop your arms and then use it. Like you said, for family, they do something similar.
Operation, probably say South Bend.
Well, with Valvo would probably be pretty recent too, because they just.
South, South Bend was together for a few years. Uh open up in the old heart town, Dragon's Mouth.
I thought I can find that about that since I work with Oakheart County every day.
Yeah, Dragon's Mouth opened up uh in the last year, okay? They're a smaller.
But yeah, so anyway, brought Roy along for the meet everybody and. A praise of how things are moving. Thank you. Yep, my next guest. The beauty is Scott Franco from Surf Internet. And uh Scott is here to kind of just also meet you guys. Um they are. The group who is currently working on the infrastructure project to the city of Knox. Um right after that started, Scott got what means that I'm headed to Johnson next. And they are moving forward also with the infrastructure in Johnson.
You also have Marshall County and Culver too, right?
Yes, what about Hamlet?
Um actually, a week from tomorrow. I have a and a meeting with the um they're doing an executive session. Cause I've got some developers coming over to Hamlet next week and Scott's gonna come along and talk to the town council about uh. Hamlet and Coons Lake as well because Coons Lake is, Hamlet and Coons Lake are on their radar next.
So I think you guys are pretty familiar with us. I mean, we built up for one of our offices and it's in Port, we're headquartered about at La Carte. And um as I said, we started in Knox, some neighboring communities, we just broke around and uh and go. Uh we provide heights and kind of spreading out from that area um around the port to get out to the. The county areas. We just had our first connections with some north uh next level connection grant people in the rural areas. So a project like this is real strategic because we think it's a good catalyst for the future. I mean, we just came from New County this morning and we're gonna do projects there. And now we're able to start pieces and things together to uh work on a project that that serves almost countywide, ninety-seven percent of all county. Will be served in the next eighteen months. Uh that's a result of the project, yeah. Yeah, I see, I just put in eighty thousand feet of cable and help like how we for for the for the county.
Um but one of the, one of the things about Stark County and and he's here mainly to talk because Coons Lake is unincorporated. So he, you know, surf would need to work directly with the county. We're a broadband ready community. We went through the process, Scott had our planning grant put together. Uh came up with a plan, the county approved the plan. And uh then we were designated as a broadband ready community, which basically is should be a streamlined uh permitting process. Free permits for projects like this um. The the Hamlet, I know, is wonderful to work with as far as incentives or uh things like this. So I don't think that Scott or Surf will have any issues with uh expediting permitting and um. Working, you know.
You're broadband ready. We're ready to bring the broadband. So I reached out and said, hey, an unincorporated area, I just need a little guidance where to start. I'll leave this with you. We don't need to go through this tonight. We get around the table with the folks that help with permitting utilities and you might want to see what they're more of how. We communicate when we go into a community and it just kind of walks through a process. Of uh this is more of a low level outline of the intended plan, like how to communicate to residents. I think I I might have a couple more copies, sorry. But it walks us through a process and we're talking to the right people that that as we understand, so we like to work in alignment with the with an area so that we don't. Overwhelm uh the process when it gets convoked and things like that. So I just wasn't sure who we talked to to talk about permits, about locates, about the use of right of ways or utility. Areas when we go to do that construction, so. Uh one of the next steps would be to try to get some of those folks around the table to kind of walk through this process. To make sure we're working in tandem and in alignment and understand that there's development happening in the near future that we're not aware of. Right.
Well, the bonding too, like if you go through a tile or a water, like, you know, was I. I was listening to the meeting we had at the foundation. I mean, I think the three of us are some of the sorry, it's exciting. I mean that. You know, especially too with the federal bowlers that come behind, you know.
Um and as far, I this morning it was out, you know, how much it costs and speeds and all that sort of thing. Uh right now, there are grant opportunities out there for lower income folks. Their basic plan is thirty-five dollars a month. And if we can get some of our lower income folks on board, they'll be paying five dollars a month.
Yeah, they qualify with the A C P program.
But that's either internet or a cell phone. It's one or the other, the low income. If they've already got a low income cell phone, they will call.
Oh, I did not.
It's one or the other.
There could be some just.
Yeah, thirty-five still isn't too bad.
And that's the basic package. People do ask about what a resident's gonna have the option for. Obviously, it's not an obligation. We had all the government people around the table. One of the things I asked was if you were going to pay for a project, you can make our county.
And they're doing everything they can right now so that I don't have to come. You know, we're gonna need this extra money to put with the project. We're hoping that everything that comes down.
But what project this is basically in the Coons Lake area at this time, correct?
At this time, we're talking about the Coons Lake area for this specific project.
And that's why we're here because.
Because we have something else going in the Knox area already.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we'll be having a ribbon cutting as soon as a. Of it goes live.
We're just about a week or so away from um a serving areas, we call it, when we do a build, we break it down to serving areas. Serving area means about three to four hundred addresses on average. So we don't overwhelm us or or the community. So that serving area is lit up. What we call it when it's live, because of the light traveling through fiber, there'll be a first connected, successfully connected customer. We'll celebrate that with with Lisa and the mayor and everybody and go ribbon cutting and declare it all becoming a gig city.
So when, when will, when will we see it in the outlined rural areas?
Hopefully sooner than later, but again, those areas are still, you know, that those are the areas. That uh we can get grant money, federal money.
Here's how strategic it gets. We we wanna do this because first of all, if you look at our overall plan of where we want to go, eventually you can start to see the ring. Sort of create some redundancy, resiliency, redundancy. And then the second reason is because um it helps build momentum for the grant funds as they become available, whether it's a next level connection grant. A B funding grant, which is federal, it's gonna be coming out next year, we're working towards. So we have uh we've identified the geography within Indiana, we're in Michigan, Illinois, and Indiana, so we have. Uh different geography in each of the three states that we are making our case to go after B funds, so. Um the more success you have showing where you have already responsibly done your projects, especially with the grant money involved. Technically, theoretically, it becomes a little easier to keep attaching to that to have more expanded success.
So is it Coons Lake area? Have you made a, have you been able with Marshall County as well? Are they gonna be part of the? Cause Coons Lake is obviously, it's two counties. I I don't mean, it doesn't matter to me, I'm just curious.
Well, we're already, we're already are worthy with.
This thirty-five dollars is for a certain amount of people to sign up.
Thirty-five dollars is the A C P program. Qualify, so on the other page, that's that's our traditional.
Still a hundred meg.
I was gonna say, I don't feel like thirty-five dollars is still gonna be.
We don't like to turn it into a commercial that people always ask, and so these are. These are the speeds and and the um levels of of uh that people can choose for our services. Um hundred, five hundred or a gig. In some, in in some instances, you'll be prepared with the fiber to be multi-gig. So eventually somewhere in the near future, it'd be very easy to crank it up and turn it into two gig. It's actually gonna be uh ready for ten gig that. Communities aren't ready for ten gig. And that when we say gig, it's symmetrical speed, your download, your upload.
A lot of this are used to less, less than ten meg, so it's a big change.
Exactly.
Hundred fifty K.
Yeah, maybe.
So again, Scott is here because it's like it's unincorporated and Scott would work directly with the county.
I'll be with you soon, that's for some next steps.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, guys.
We have a small transfer from the surveyor. It's only three hundred dollars. I'm gonna make a motion that we accept. On additional appropriation and office supplies and three hundred dollars with a reduction in postage, travel expenses and legal notices.
I'll second it.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Um is there any further discussion? All those in favor, I. Is there any of those? The last thing that we have on here is. Two more things.
Okay, um I would like to have an employee appreciation event again this year. You guys have always fun with it before, um at least the last. Four years.
It's another name for a Christmas party, just.
Um we had actually so many people come last year uh that I didn't have enough food. So I'm asking for eighteen hundred dollars.
They have a motion, is there a second? Uh is there any further discussion, second was we talked. All those in favor, I. Is there any opposed? I think it's the other thing.
I just said something, it's it's not really, it's not really our deal, it's probably both the commissioners, but it would be our deal ultimately. I'm just gonna state this because I've been brought to me by several constituents. And it's a the the old famous infamous animal control officer. I mean, that's turned out to be a pretty good deal. I don't know if the planning commission, if they're supposed to enforce. The ordinances for darkening dark, parking dogs. Now, so they don't have to do that. So. I told this person that I would bring it up. Not saying that we.
I'm gonna say we're gonna lift the hiring.
Well, that's, that's exactly, that's exactly the thing right there. Where will we get the money, but.
It's hard to replace Sterling Patrick.
I I told this person that I that I would bring it up, everybody to learn that people feel there is a need and they very well may be. I just. Run a little bit, a little bit in the past, we addressed that in a finding commission meeting. And and. Because it came across not just dog. But in noise ordinance, a noise ordinance period, there's a racetrack over in Hudson, they run four wheeler. Drives a neighbor's nuts and 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 dogs. I mean, it's a, I just brought it up for bottom of the thought, that's all. I have nothing else to say.
Um we do have, we do have one for like a darkening dock, uh shrinking dock, but. Um there is a noise ordinance too. It's it has to do with the time of the day, I think. There's some, there's something on there, there's something on there.
Yeah, i- it's not, it's not very well enforced because they can't.
The only thing I would say about, thing I'm on the agenda about is please recoup these documents that I had Rachel copy. Because they are the, out of the two hundred and fifty-two statutes that went into effect July first. I I sorted out the ones that I think most directly pertain to a county council. Um such as like one is that we now um have to, the county shall provide by ordinance the number of reserve officers. That our sheriff can have. So if you read through the digests, at least I have attached the statutes that. Do affect anything in on those statutes is the new language. The most important thing that I feel though that I found in all of that. Goes to an opportunity, actually two opportunities that we now as a county have to provide tax relief to our citizens. One is a circuit breaker tax credit that we can now enact at a county level. State of Indiana has chosen to make citizens over age of fifty, over the age of fifty-five eligible for this new property tax credit. Um and we would have to designate um a uh. We'd have to figure out income guidelines, so I included a a printout from a website for the uh. From the Indy or Institute of Taxation and Economic Policy on why circuit breaker tax of. Brakes are are just a great thing. They're aimed to help some of the people who need the brake the most. Um the other thing we now have uh available as a county is a homestead credit. Um I guess in addition to the one that they're they already received, but because this is a branding statute allowing a county. Pursuant to homestead credit.
We always have a homestead credit, but they've increased it, but they've done away with the mortgage.
Well, this, this county option property tax relief um. This is, if you look, oh, well, I don't know if I copied this one, but I can send everybody copies. This is everything that was added in twenty twenty-three, so. My reading of this is it's all new stuff that I think that um I'm just bringing it up for now, but I think we need to. Take steps to look into at least implementing this um circuit breaker tax for people over fifty-five and who are uh in certain income tax brackets. I mean, everybody's always always pointing fingers at us for.
I thought it was gonna be more than that, cause I, that's why I texted you, cause I was gonna, I've got to jump in another meeting. I thought it was gonna be more than that because I, that's why I texted you because I was gonna, I've gotta jump in another meeting.
I'm just, I'm shortening it so you can just read. Well, for the circuit breaker thing, I would just say, let's, uh, everybody could take a look at it, read it, and then maybe at the next meeting, we can talk more about it.
The problem is it's gonna reduce our income.
I know.
Taxes are already pretty low, but I mean, I think. Back to the solar, I mean, there are other things I think that we can help people out.
Well, and you know. I've heard so, you know, we've all heard complaining about because of higher assessment, the property taxes have gone up. And so this might be a way to get, again, a s- a certain group who.
Should be everybody.
Well, you can, the state of Indiana, take it up with legislature. Take it up with the legislature. I am too.
Thank you, Cassie, like that's. Did you, did you wanna talk about any more of it, Tessie?
Yeah, take a look at the material I provided, maybe next meeting. I hope not, because I would.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.